One, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. This discussion item is me circling back to talk about a dashboard. And so this is different than the dashboard that we're now using and improving and tweaking to say who on which campus has tested positive. This is a dashboard to help us with our decision making. This is a dashboard that I initially started envisioning back in the olden days when we were going to reopen like kind of phase by phase. But and I think that we need this kind of information for us to monitor what's going on. I think it should be internal facing. I could participate in conversation about external, but it's really designed for us. You will see that it has some of the traditional measures in terms of surge capacity for ICU beds and general medical beds, the total positive test percentage, influenza-like illness, COVID-like illness. Now, those actually came from the governor's step-by-step reopening plan. So, you know, I gave him his language there. Then the daily lab positivity rate. So, and then student absenteeism as well as staff absenteeism. So, in my mind, we would have a drop-down box that we could scroll to whichever school and see, you know, how many, how many students were absent or what their compared to baseline was a year ago. The first thing that's going to happen is if we have a significant outbreak and we don't have mass screening, the first thing that I expect to happen will be a flip-up in staff absenteeism. That's why that's there. Then we've got to report it positive cases. So, that should match with the dashboard that currently exists. And then, and this one is really important to me. I've only been asking for this for months. So, I think that we need to be able to see, school by school, how many students you can hold at six-foot social distancing. And then the next column would say, how many students are enrolled face-to-face? And then what is the percent utilization at six-foot social distancing? Then we would have the three-foot social distancing and the percent utilization at three-foot social distancing. So, we can see which schools are potentially getting into trouble in terms of not being able to maintain the desired social distancing. And then maybe we can double down on making sure there's education and double down on the sanitizing and so forth. But, but, and, you know, I've had a number of conversations. I, you know, we've got some fabulous staff who assures me that they can do this. And in my mind, this would be something that the district leadership and school board would look at on a regular basis and help inform us as to the status of how this pandemic is impacting our schools.
Ms. Brill.
So, I do like a lot of the information that you have here. My concern is how, how labor-intensive is this going to be for staff? First of all, to put together all these aspects. And I don't really know, like, do I really need to know which schools have six feet, which schools have three feet? I think if you have a school that has more incidents, then we could drill into, okay, why, you know, what's going on at that school? But I'm just concerned, and I guess this is to the superintendent, how laborious is this going to be to put together if, if we did something like this?
Well, I mean, I think our whole summer's been laborious. So, it would be another, you know, I think we've been, so I don't think it'd be that difficult. I think you have to remember, a lot of the information, as I see the list now, we, we don't populate that information. That's just going to be downloaded from the Health Department and other places. I think the school-level data, like, one thing that stands out to me is the student absenteeism. Well, right now, we have a lot of students absent, and it probably has nothing to do with COVID. It's because of the, you know, the unstable environment. You know, if I can stay in the bed and just log in and hit the, and, you know, and turn off the camera, that's what they're doing, especially the secondary students. But I think moving forward, I think once we become more stable, it'll really help us. I actually think the team, the team has built a very good shell. Dr. Robinson has kind of alluded to that. So, what I would, what I would request from the board, let me work, that the Chief of Staff and his team work through it and bring back what can be done. And then we can keep working through it, because I don't think it's going to stop. Even if they created something next week, I think we're going to keep tweaking it as we learn more. So, I think that's, I think that's the hard truth about a lot of our work right now. It's still fluid. I mean, so we're trying to get it tighter and tighter and tighter, but we're going to learn. So, I don't, I don't think, right now, the staff, this is unreasonable for us to explore, because I actually think we have a lot of this. We just need to package it for you.
Mrs. Whitfield, then Vice Chairman Shaw, then Dr. Robinson.
I just shared the same concerns as Ms. Brill about the intensity of labor for our staff. I know they work all the time and nobody gets a break ever. So, the idea of just letting them work for no reason, it bothers me. So, and some of these things on here are already populated on the FAU COVID tracker. So, I would say that for those things, why, why duplicate those efforts? If it's something that really can be of benefit to our decision-makers, then, then, of course, we should make that available to them. But I don't want to see them just duplicate efforts for no reason. And so, I like the idea of the superintendent going back and really investigating what is possible for staff to do reasonably.
Mr. Shaw.
Thank you very much. I, I like the list. The only one I have concern about is the issue of trying to report six feet, three feet, two feet, one feet. That one, I think, could create a real problem for us, because I think that is so fluid. Even within a school, there may be half of the, half of the school that can distance at six feet and a half of the school, three feet, and the next day, it's going to change. So, I think it's important to have that information, but I'm not sure that I'd like to have it on a dashboard, because I think that could create some angst on the part of parents who are going to say, how come your dashboard says that you don't have this? And it could be creating a bigger problem for us, but I think it is good information. The rest of them, I thought, were really things that could be beneficial.
Mr. Chairman, for the purposes of time, the Chief of Staff actually has a meeting scheduled tomorrow with the developers. So, I think if you let, let us get to that meeting, we can, he can actually talk to each of you on Friday when he calls you about that status, and then we can take it from there.
Dr. Robinson, if I could just go first, because it's on this issue. So, I've had this discussion with, with the Deputy Superintendent. One of my schools last Friday, one of the schools in my district, high school, there was a COVID case. I talked to Alonso, Dr. Alonso, on Saturday morning. I talked to the principal Friday night and the instructional superintendent. The fact that, that that student was six feet away from everybody else, none of the kids around him had to go home. Dr. Alonso said, if any of those students would have been within five feet or four feet or three feet, those four would have gone home. When the kid moved to period two, those four went and went home. When the kid moved to period three, so by the end of the day, there would have been 24 students that had to go home. She said, the big difference here is, and she thought the understanding is with this district, that they would use six feet and not, and it's got to be clear to the principals, it's got to be six feet unless you get some kind of permission from somebody, because otherwise, we're going to end up shutting down entire classrooms, because we're not following the recommendations of the Health Department. So, and, and the principal at that school said, the, every question that he got that night from Health Department staff was, are you sure there was nobody else within six feet of that student? Because anybody within that would have been in the contact tracing, would have had to go home. So, we need to be careful with this, because we're getting all these emails from people that are saying, in my school, the desks are only three feet apart. At this point, I understand that might be a problem at some of the elementary schools, where there's a lot of kids and there's not a lot of other room. But in the middle and high schools, when we have 20 and 30% occupancy currently, there's no reason we should give any, any teacher or principal and the opportunity to move those desks closer to six feet, just so we don't end up like other districts around the state, that one kid gets infected and we find out that 35 kids went home and everybody thinks the school's infected. And in fact, we sent all these kids home, because they were too close to the kid that was sitting in the classroom. So, I think we need to stress that it has to be six feet, and I want to see that on that dashboard to make sure we know which schools are violating the six-foot distance, because those are the schools where we're going to have to send a lot of kids home if somebody gets infected. Dr. Robinson?
So, yeah, thank you for saying that. You know, I've been a little bit obsessed with this six-foot social distancing from the beginning of this pandemic. Now, this, what I envisioned here, and it can always be improved, this is my best idea at the moment, is that we would see just, it would just be straight numbers. I, I didn't envision that we would have like class-by-class data on this dashboard, but it would say, school XYZ, they've determined, as they have already determined, how many children they can hold six feet apart. So, let's say, I'm the principal, I can, I determined at my school, I can hold 500 children six feet apart. If it was three feet apart, I could, I could hold 800, let's say. And so, right now, I have 450 kids. So, that's going to be, what, 90% utilization at six-foot social distancing? And whatever the number is at three feet. And that's what would come, so, so we could, you could look at that and go, okay, they're good. They're just at 90% at six-foot social distancing. That's not class-by-class, it's just straight numbers. So, I realized that even inside that, depending on how the principal arranged it, you might have one class that is 12-foot social distance and another that's four. Well, to your point, Mr. Barbier, we need to constantly reinforce how important the six-foot social distancing is. But this would just give us, as board members and district leadership, just straight numbers. How many can fit in that space? Not saying how the space has been arranged, but just how many can fit in there. And I, and I think that we have to continue to reinforce the message on how important six-foot social distancing is. And this would be numbers to tell us just overall, if that particular school has too many children, and I'm talking face-to-face, and the absenteeism was face-to-face. And to Ms. Brill's point, this is prevention, right? I'm not interested in having kids get infected and then tracked down and say, oh, well, shucks, they were only, you know, three-foot social distancing. No, I want to prevent that. That's what this is about, so we can look at it and then figure out, well, what, what do we do? We might end up having to make some hard decisions at some point, if we are going to stick firm with six-foot social distancing. But if, if we are, if we get to the point, so many kids are there, that we cannot do the six-foot, we need to know it. I mean, we at least need to know it, and then figure out, what else can we do, right? I mean, we're doing, we should be doing all the, the basics that we've discussed numerous times, right? But we need to know when the numbers are just such that the school cannot maintain six-foot social distancing.
If I may, Mr. Oswald, didn't we get, collect from every school, the six and three-feet list? So, we have that record. So, we have that, so I can make sure the board gets that. And I think Dr. Robinson brings up a very valid point. So, at some point, people are going to come back. And so, the question for us, I think Ms. McQuinn and I had a conversation months ago around, are we going to do a lottery? Like, how are we going to tell certain families, you can't come on campus? And again, that's a hard decision and a hard conversation to be had. We're not there yet. But I just want to put that out there, that at some point, that is going to be a very, very challenging conversation for us to have.
So, Mr. Superintendent, all I'm asking is, until we get to that point, we stay at six feet? Just so we don't have a situation like it happened at my school, where 24 kids go home instead of one? Okay? Ms. McQuinn?
Okay, so of the hun, we have received hundreds of emails that say that they are in classrooms right now, that they're not six feet apart. So, I just want an answer, at some point, where are we? And I did read other districts, and they always say, six feet wherever possible. I just want to know for us, so that whoever the staff is that answers these emails, are we, do we have kids closer than six feet apart? Teachers tell us, we do.
Mr. Oswald?
We started collecting that information this week. So, just about all of our schools are at least six feet. There are some elementary schools that, because of the number, in particular in your particular district, Ms. McQuinn, we have some, you know, a large number of elementary school-aged children coming in with limited space. So, that it is less than six feet in a couple of schools. But the majority, the rest are still at the six feet.
And I do, I'm so sorry. I do understand that it is more at the elementary level. And we have some, well, we all, we have, as a district, many wonderful elementary schools. But I just don't want us to all think that our kids are six feet apart, if they're not.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I heard Dr. Fanois say, in the interest of time, but I just need to hammer this home. So, but guess what? You know what we can do that, that I'm not aware that we're doing, but maybe we are, especially in elementary school, is we can do the pods. That's an additional layer of safety, right? So that they're not interacting with other kids. And the, the other thing is, as we move forward and, and parents have to make commitment, commitments, we may learn more that helps us to put more safety measures in place. Or maybe we learn more that says, well, you know, you really don't have to have to do six feet, right? Maybe we'll learn that. But in the meantime, we need to, we need to stick, I think, with the, the six feet. And, and we need to know it, because then we need to figure out, what are we going to do as a board to try to help keep people safe?
Any other comments? Okay. On the, on the policy, POL01, I was reminded by the Board Clerk that I took a vote on the amendment, but I didn't take a vote on the major. So, I need to, all in favor, POL1, that there's a, I, first of all, I need a, I need a motion to approve POL1, the main motion. I had that already? You just didn't take the vote? Okay, we're going to vote on the motion that was already there. I didn't ask for a vote. All in favor, opposed? Motion carries 6-1 with Dr. Robinson in opposition. Next item on for board discussion is, Dr. Robinson, BD2.
Thank you. So, I'll try to make it quick. So, I know that we are planning to plan the strategic plan, right? So, and our strategic, our mission and vision talks about equity, and I hope that we will actually double down on equity work. But I think, in order to do that, that we need to have conversation or training as a board and leadership team on what is equity. And so, this is just a request that we look at the possibility of scheduling time. I don't know who would lead the conversation, but scheduling time that as a leadership team, we talk about what equity is, so that then, when we move to the vision and mission and then the strategic plan, that we're all like, you know, singing from the same page in the hymnal about equity.
Board members' discussion, Ms. Brill.
I was just going to say, that's a great idea.
Ms. Sanders shaking her head, yes. Mr. Shaw, yes. Ms. McQuinn, yes. Mr. Superintendent, can you try and get us a workshop on that?
Yeah, yes. Not only do I agree, I think, as we start working on the strategic plan, I actually believe we're going to have to have a series of workshops on this. This is not something you can do in just one, one meeting. But we can definitely start organizing sort of the introductory, and then we'll go from there. So, I agree.
Thank you. BD3, Mrs. Andrews.
Thank you. This came up, because a parent called and was shocked that her school did not have a school nurse, which was in my district, and I did not know. So, I did ask for the board office to send me the list of all of the schools who did not have a full-time nurse, who had full-time nurses, part-time. So, that was good information. As well as just visiting the schools, I found out a little bit more about the, the school designee and response team. Now, when Dr. Alonso was here and they did that presentation, I didn't know who that, that designee person was. You know, I thought that may have been somebody with the Health Department, but it's us. So, you know, I looked on our legislative, we need some money to pay these people, because that's the real hazardous kind of thing that these people are doing. But when I looked at it, I saw there were a lot of schools that had part-time people that weren't there full-time, not all day. Some didn't have anybody, and the alternative schools were just on call. So, this is good information. I don't know where we're keeping this information, not just for me, but for parents, for people to know exactly how we're doing for each one of our schools health-wise. And when you looked at all the answers that came in from Michelle Fleming, it's good information. So, do we keep this somewhere on the website? So, if a parent wanted to find out what's going on as it relates, relates to our school nurses, our health process within the school, is it somewhere where someone can get the questions answered? I got them, and I think you got them, because Michelle Fleming sent them to all of us, I think. So, is this somewhere where people can see, or is it just something I'm reading now, because it was answered?
And those are just internal documents. We typically don't put that as a public-facing thing. And obviously, you know, because the nurses are actually, you know, in partnership with the Health Department, the, what's the, what's the name of the organization?
Healthcare District.
Healthcare District, excuse me, it's late. And so, they are doing all the hiring of Dr. Alonzo's. Matter of fact, at the Legislative Delegation last Friday, she and I spoke to this, this actual question. And so, they have 26 people that are, they are currently going through the process to fill those, those vacancies. And they're continuing, but I think Dr. Alonso was very clear, the entire health profession right now is struggling to find healthcare professionals. So, she's created these teams that can be deployed. And so, you know, I think, you know, I don't know if Dr. Sheffield, do you have anything else to add, but we can work through that.
As we can, I think you hit it right there. This information, it is in-house, it's not something that is published there for the public. And I know Jay, you've been working very closely with the Department of Health and the Healthcare District, if you had anything to add.
Well, I would just like to request that you keep the board members informed. This was good information, but I had to seek it out. So, it would be nice if board members could get this information. It sounds like we're going to have most of these vacancies filled, from what it said to me. So, I would like to know when we do that. So, as I'm going through schools and talking to people, I will have the information. Because when you look at the healthcare, the school designee, that's a lot of work that they have to do, filling out the forms, actually really working with these individuals who may or may not be exposed. It's a big deal. I thought maybe that was a nurse doing that, but these are just our employees.
Yes, it's our employees, and we've always had the health, the, we've always had the health room designee, which is a school district employee. But we will, I will work with Jay, and we will keep the board updated. And we actually are scheduling a meeting with the Healthcare District in the coming days to actually work with our after-care programs, to also train our after-care directors as it pertains to the, the health services, as we're talking about, you know, the same, same protocol that we want to follow during the instructional day. We want to hold tight these same kind of protocols for our after-care. So, we are really trying to just bridge the gap and, and tighten as much as we possibly can.
Well, if you could keep us informed, that would be great.
And if I may, you know, I, I have to give Mr. Jay Bogerson, Glenda Sheffield, and Keith Oswald, and I'm going to give myself. So, we have learned a lot about the medical profession in the last six months. To the point where we can actually, we can have a conversation now with medical professionals and use the correct terminology. And actually, it happened to me a couple of weeks ago, and it surprised me. I was like, I think I said that correctly. And so, you know, I had, you know, that is not Jay's area of expertise, but he and his team had just jumped in, and Glenda and Keith as well. So, I just had to say that publicly. It's, we've learned a lot.
I got it, yeah. I think we did. I have just one more thing.
Ms. Sanders.
Yeah, this is not a discussion item, and, and I'm not going to just try to keep something going. But I just want to tell you, Policy 3.82, which passed today, with some of the same information based on how we did business with having the folks designate for consideration to be given to employees who have been granted accommodations for ADA, those that had illnesses, 65 and over, so on and so on. We kind of bumbled that up a bit. I think people felt like they had not gotten the right information. They felt like they could have been educated better, they may not have gone to the doctor, spent money or whatever, to get tests. So, now that Mr. Oswald was going through a new process, we got a panel here that was mainly human resources. Our process can be better for people the next time around. Hopefully, we won't have a next time around, but we might have a next time around. And I just hope that we can treat people differently and make sure we educate them, because some of the folks have resigned, they're gone from the district, because they just didn't get it or whatever happened. And I notice we got better over time, and we're still getting better. So, hopefully, we will learn from our mistakes of how we rushed through this. So, if we get to this place again, that we'll have a process in place where people will understand what the expectations are, and they can govern themselves accordingly and not feel hurt, or feel like, you know, they were not given the right information and they were mistreated. Thank you.
So, let me ask a question, since Ms. Sanders brought this up. So, we've got a lot of teachers out there that have applied for distance-learning positions, and they've been told, no, they can't have them. Tonight, we changed the procedure on parents picking one or the other. The intent, then, is that we're going to revisit all of those teachers that have applied, right? We're going to go to the priority-two teachers, and the master boards are going to be changed at the beginning of November to allow these teachers to teach kids that are at home. Is that what we did tonight? Dr. Lucaba, is that your understanding? Is that the master boards are going to be changed, once we know which parents are keeping their kids home for the entire season, the semester, and which ones are going to school? And now, we're going to take all those teachers, the one, the priority-two teachers first, that wanted to teach only from home, and they wanted to teach, and we're going to assign those teachers to those kids for the rest of the semester, so that we can put kids back in front of teachers instead of substitutes for the rest of the semester. So, is that the understanding that I have tonight? So, we're going to notify all those teachers, that they're going to be re-looked at as soon as we get the answers from the parents about which kids are going to stay home and which ones are coming back?
Yeah, what you approved today, which is, you know, Policy 3.82, pretty much, everybody that's been approved for, for a priority, they will have the opportunity to, you know, be part of this new remote work opportunity that Mr. Oswald's putting together. But I want to make sure that I mentioned something, I'm sorry, I can't talk with this, that I mentioned something, that ADA, those are considered priority-one.
Sure.
Those are going to be considered first, for whatever remote work is available at those schools. But they've been approved, those that are eligible are eligible, we're not taking that away. Those applications have been date and timestamp, they have a priority. So, once that remote work is available at those schools, the principals will start to kind of have those conversations with those teachers that have been approved, that did not get remote work originally. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's clear to the teachers that are watching tonight, because we've been telling them that we're trying to fix this problem, that we are telling them, that even though their principal, at this point, has said they have nothing available, they need to wait until the beginning of November, because we may have a whole lot of spots available, depending on how many kids are going to stay home. So, we're going to take all those teachers that were told, no, I have no positions for you, and we're going to let them teach from home, kids that are going to be home for the rest of the semester. We should go to priority-two first, priority-one, of course, priority-two. Before we go to priority-three, we fix priority-two. Before priority-four, we go to priority-three. We just make sure, go down the list. The teachers need to be told that there is a light at the end of the tunnel. I'm more concerned, at this point, about the students, because I know in one of the high schools where my grandson goes, there's no teacher for one class, and there's no teacher on the horizon for that class, because it's a specialized area that they can't find a teacher at the moment. So, I just want to make sure we remember that there's kids out there that don't have teachers. And there's home, teachers at home that would like to teach those kids. So, the faster we get that matched up and get those teachers teaching kids again, the better off our kids are going to be, because that's what we're here for, is to make sure, it's become all about the adults, but we forgot about there's kids out there that need teachers in their classrooms. So, I know that we have until November 1st to get this done. That's a whole month now we're going to go by, and I understand we got to give parents the time, but it's a whole month of another month of substitutes in classrooms where there's no teachers being assigned. Those teachers are sitting at home, and they're not being assigned to those kids. So, hopefully, we can get this done as quickly as possible, and the teachers know that, that come November 1st, they may have a much better opportunity of getting, you're all looking at me like, am I, am I missing something? Isn't that what we did tonight?
No, so they're going to look at to see if there's possibilities. But I'm, I don't want to go out the door tonight, thinking that we're going to overpromise what we can deliver on. Remember, the part of this conversation also talked about social distancing. So, if we're assigning more teachers to the ones that are in brick and mortar, we're going to have issues when it comes to being able to social distance the ones that are actually brick and mortar. So, it's a big puzzle piece, which principals will look to see where they can potentially accommodate additional remote work. But that will take some time to look at to see, but I don't want to think that every teacher's applied, that we can accommodate.
No, I'm not suggesting every teacher apply. I'm just saying, I want to make sure the teachers understand tonight that what this board did is make arrangements, so that if they want to teach remotely, and we have 30 kids that are sitting at home without a teacher, because we have nobody to teach them, or we have synchronized teaching going on, and the teachers are going, I can't do this. And, and those kids will be assigned to a teacher that's going to be a priority-two teacher first, a priority-three teacher next, that's going to teach those kids. I mean, if that's not what we did tonight, then we, we let every, we let the teachers down. But just assigning the parents to tell them where they want the kids doesn't help the teachers at all, unless we're going to actually go in now and make a, a good-faith attempt to match up teachers that are at home with kids that are going to stay home for the semester. That's what we're doing, correct?
Yeah, so, when I talked to the, all of the principals last week, that is, that's, so there, once we solidify who's going to be in and out, the principals have committed to making a good-faith effort to accommodate those people that they can. Now, let's be really honest, a lot of the principals have already started this process, you know? And so, I think this will just give us the time to really show up those schedules and make the adjustments.
Ms. Brill, and Ms. Sanders, and Ms. McQuinn.
Thank you. So, a couple of things. One is that I don't know if the superintendent, at some point, can set at some point can set a threshold if there's a certain number, if you only have three or four students in a classroom for a teacher, that that teacher, and if that teacher wanted to teach remotely, that they could. And one of the schools I visited did a great job. I think 12 of their teachers are doing the, the remote, but they have some of the kids in school. And what this principal did is they have the media center set up so that when the student has a teacher that's remote, they have, they have other teachers who are getting paid a little extra stipend to be able to monitor in that room. And they have all the kids separated, but for those that their teachers are distant, they're able to, those few kids, students are able to work with their teacher. So, you know, I think that if we have some principals that are making it work, you know, maybe it's also, I don't think it's that the principals don't want to do it. I think that some of them maybe don't have the vision to make it work. So, and you know, and I, unfortunately, here in more high schools where the principals have just said, "No, we're not, we're not going to offer those opportunities." So I hope we look at that again, because these teachers are coming to me and saying, "I've got three, three students in the, in the classroom. You know, why am I doing it?"
Well, I'm not blaming the principals. I'm just saying the principals were told not to change their master boards so not to make this happen. Now we're going to tell them to change their master boards and try and make it happen for as many teachers as, as possible. Ms. McQuinn, I'm sorry, I understand your hand was first. It's hard to see you down at the end. Maybe you need to stand up and do jumping jacks.
I will. I'll do that, Mr. Barbieri. Okay, I'm just a little nervous, so I'm looking for some reassurance here about dates. In terms of, and I totally get it and totally agree with Dr. Robinson, that whatever this date is, I'm nervous when Mr. Barbieri talks about November. Schools will have made contact with any parent who did not respond. Okay, that having been said, what is the date by which the parents must decide, virtual, brick and mortar?
The 14th of October.
Thank you.
And the two weeks between that and November was the time that the principals are working on rearranging their master boards that goes into effect at the beginning of the second semester. I think Mrs., Mrs. Andrews, you were next, and then Dr. Robinson.
And thank you. And I just want to tell the principals, I haven't been into a lot of schools, but a lot of principals did good work with their master schedule. The first school I went to, on the very first day, the principal said, "Ms. Andrews, I took care of all of my teachers." And as I moved around to a lot of different schools, from Wellington, Royal Palm Beach, all the way to the Glades, a lot of principals did good work, and I want to commend them. But then I did run into people who says, "We're not doing it at all." And I think it goes back to that master schedule piece. They may not know how to do it, so we need to help them to understand how to do it. I have a teacher calling me, that's an ESE teacher, that's science certified, that, that's experienced, that's an exceptional teacher. But she hasn't been able to, to do anything, and I don't want her to just quit. This is a critical shortage area. So we don't want to lose these teachers. Having been a recruiter for almost 20 years, you're not going to find great people, not at this time of the year. So we don't want to start losing everybody when we really need them. And we certainly don't want to have subs in the class for the remainder of the year.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Barbieri, for bringing up the students. So this, when I talked about the principals meeting with their staff, it wasn't just about the staff, it's about making it work and matching up the students to the teachers and making it work. But let me just tell you this. So, and I said before, tonight, that, that some of it is just from principals who don't have the experience under their belt to, quote, "break the rules," right? Because up until now, doing anything, any changes, as you said, was breaking the rules, right? There were some principals who were breaking the rules to do what was right for their students and staff and got in trouble for it, right? But then there was this one school, I spoke to an Algebra I teacher who told me that at her school, she was the only Algebra I teacher who was working distant. She was working remote because her own children, she wanted them to stay remote, and she had, so she needed to be with them. Three other Algebra I teachers at the school who were good with teaching face-to-face. The Algebra I teachers worked it out amongst themselves. Okay, I'm face-to-face, but I, or simultaneous, actually, but I give you, so-called, give you some of my virtual students. They had worked it out. The principal told them, "No." Why? Because that principal had not received clear permission to do this. And so what's happening now is they're getting permission to make, to be flexible and make the changes needed to meet the needs of their students and staff, right? I am really glad that we are finally here. Unfortunately, not all of our principals start their comments with things like, "They might fire me for this, but I'm going to do what's right for the students and my staff." Not all principals have that courage or that seniority in the system, right? So we are now giving them permission to do what's right, and I'm glad we're finally at this point. Thank you.
If there are no further comments, Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything? We need a motion to adjourn, motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Vice Chairman Shaw. All in favor? Post? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.